So there's gonna be about a 10-minute delay before we begin, so I just wanted to let you know.
We'll get together one day, have a cup of coffee, just introduce each other to...
Sounds good.
Where do you live at?
I live over on River Oaks.
Okay.
Westview. I live across from Jamie Parsons.
Oh, okay. It's kinda funny, because Jamie Parsons' mother-in-law lives across from me. What if that door is unlocked, so we can make the fast exit, you know, if somebody starts blasting?
Always know where your exit is, all right?
That exit sign, where I can get the heck out of here if somebody comes after me.
Ah, okay, okay. Okay.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Didn't even get this close.
Yeah, that's true, too.
Hey, um, so...
I'm sorry to hear that.
Who gets it to Jeremy? Who gets it?
They fax it to him, I guess.
Okay.
Or scan it.
So I'll just give it to Melissa?
Yeah.
But you don't know for sure? You don't know if she's had her sign it yet? Okay. Okay.
And if Melissa would've been out here on H4 and said she signed it?
Yeah.
I'm retired. Yep. Well, I'm 65. Yep, I got them. I'm on my... Signed up.
Let's say his not the age, it's miles.
I'm just waiting to figure out when I'm gonna start drawing my social security. Garnet. Well, it all boils down to how long they can go. But there you go, and I know I won. That's right. That's right. Oh, yeah.
Your mic is on. Becca says she can hear you talking on their video.
I'm sorry.
She said can hear Dan H really well. She said we can hear Dan H really well.
Who said that?
Becca.
Who?
Becca.
Ooh, here we go.
She's watching on video. Speak it. Okay. Speak into it right now and see. Speak into your mic. And I asked her if she can hear you now. Can hear me also. I don't think they can pick up our voices from here.
It's gonna be just a minute to get this going.
Tell me when you're ready. I don't have an agenda always, do I?
Ready?
So what happens with modern equipment? She's running off, I think, another... Are you running off another budget? Okay. It is not balanced. It's... And I know why it's not, so that can be fixed. I thought it was, but I had dreamed up $75,000 that we didn't have.
Well, that's a nice dream.
I know. I could go back and dream up some more.
You're recording.
You ready? We call this meeting to order at 6:39 on August 13th. This time, please stand for the invocation.
Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us all here tonight to discuss and view all sides of issues that is always gonna be for the best interest of the city. And you know, all people here are looking for what is best for the city. And we just have different ideas, and we can share them here in a kind and thoughtful manner. And thank you for our health and our ability to work out these situations as we move through this process and the budget process, and it's new to a lot of us. And so please, give us patience and tenacity to finish it up and come through it at the end with a very good resolution. And bless us here tonight, and have us do what pleases you. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I wanna welcome you all. We don't normally have this many people interested in city government, but it's nice to see that we do now. Okay, first we have Jennifer and Ray Phillips.
Jennifer and Ray were not able to be here this evening. They're out of town, but they sent me a written statement. They have asked me to read on their behalf.
No, who are you?
My name is Tammy Smith.
Okay, you're next on the list anyway, so you can use your time now. You have to be here to get to speak about it.
Okay, well then, this is my statement. My name is Ray Phillips. My wife Jennifer and I do not live in the Jefferson City Limits. We, however, own three retail businesses in Jefferson, along with a commercial property which has several tenants, all within the Jefferson City Limits. We're specifically asking that the amount budgeted for the Friends of Jefferson Animals not be decreased from its current amount. We rely heavily on the efforts of the FOGA regarding the stray and feral animals. Our businesses and tenants are impacted daily with the direct and indirect effects that these animals impose. None of us are able to place nice seating for customers outside of our buildings because of the animals sleeping and urinating on them. We have to use metal frame chairs and tables that we can wash and spray frequently to get rid of hair, urine, and feces and the smells they leave. We support Friends of Jefferson Animals wholeheartedly in the programs that they have implemented to deal with this situation in a humane, animal-loving, and cost-effective manner. We also want to highlight the nonprofit and volunteer basis of all of their operations. Jefferson cannot handle this situation without Friends of Jefferson Animals. Jefferson needs Friends of Jefferson Animals. The animals need them. We respectfully request that this city council does not decrease funding for them. Ray Phillips, Jennifer Phillips, they have Red Bus Cupcakes, Calavera Leather and Cigar Company, Calavera Home, Calavera Company, LLC, all located here within Jefferson City Limits.
Thank you.
And as for mine, I would like to say that as far as building a new city hall facility, the city should consider doing a bond election in order to get the funds. That way, it gets voter approval. It also allows the city to plan for the future in building a building. I see we have advertised again for a city administrator. It seems to me that the last two administrators that were hired ended up costing the taxpayers money because the city had to buy them out of their contracts. Eric Kirkendall was paid six months of his salary plus benefits to the tune of approximately $70,000. And before him was Kevin Huckabee, and his termination cost the city, I believe, over $100,000. Before we spend money on another city administrator, maybe we need to think about another way to go about doing it. So before it costs us another $100,000 or $200,000 to buy them out of their contracts.
Darlene and Paul Keith.
We're Paul and Darlene Keith. We live here in Jefferson. We weren't here last night, but we did watch online. And one of the things that really amazed me was when certain things were brought up, budget, cost, things like that, just that everybody sitting up here, or not everybody, but many people sitting up here were just amazed at the cost of things. Well, each and every one of you, and I'm looking at each and every one of you, you should know that budget from the front to the back to the penny. You should know what you're doing if you're gonna sit up here and use our monies. And I've heard some discussion about the building for storage. Well, you know, I don't know what the law is on keeping paper storage or whatever, but, you know, you can digitize things. There's also storage that you can rent, climate-controlled, for way cheaper than hundreds of thousands of dollars. And that's just what I wanna speak about.
So, we don't have animals, but we do deal with cats, and we deal with so many different animals up on our hill. And fortunately for us, we have Dana and we have Ms. Sharon that we can call on and ask someone at FOGA, what do we do? How can we help? And they offer that assistance. Unlike the city, who tells us for over seven years now, if they get on your property, you can kill them. Not acceptable. Not acceptable from... And, you know, you guys have heard those stories. I'm sure that many of you have heard those stories. We happen to live in a ward that does not have representation, and that's unfortunate because we have so many issues. But I would encourage you to walk through this budget that you are proposing and shave some of the necessary operational fat that is in it, because we can all agree that there is a great deal of operational monies that are being wasted. It shouldn't be tabled, it should be handled. And tabling things is kind of a norm for aldermen in our community, and it should not be tabled. You need to handle the budget. Cut it down. This is a huge facility, and we are the county seat, and we have people... Our city government works in a tiny little space, and this is used, what, 20% maybe of the year? That's a waste. So cut the budget for an additional building and figure out what we own and use it. Use it to make this city proud. This is embarrassment, truly.
Thank you. Anne LeBlanc.
Well, Patricia, we met you yesterday, and it didn't end up well. I didn't like how you skipped me last night. Yes, you did. Don't even lie about it. Then the video. Thank you, Hugh, for skipping my video, deleting that online. Yes, you did. And your attitude tonight is a lot better than it was last night. And how you talk to your board members here is disgusting. I don't even talk to my husband like that. These are good people here. And don't disrespect this town, and don't disrespect who is on this board either, because we're not gonna stand for it. Like I told you yesterday, don't get too comfortable in that seat. Done talking.
Sandra Halt.
Hi. I'm a new resident to Jefferson. I just found out about FOGA because a stray feral cat came to my house with five kittens. All righty. I, out of my own little social security pocket, paid for four of those, and the other two, I found out about FOGA, and they fixed those last two kittens for me. My work history is with the Dallas SPCA. I was there for five years. I was a cruelty investigator, an animal control officer. What I do know is the most important thing is getting animals spayed and neutered. I heard a story today that somebody made a remark like, "Oh, don't feed them, and they'll go away." No, they won't. What they do, if you don't feed them, is they still breed. They just go off, and then they bring the kittens back to my house, and I get to fix them. So if nothing else, make sure in your budget, as somebody who was with the SPCA, and you see those sad commercials, right, just tears at your heart every single time, but don't tell people to let them go off in the woods and die somewhere from hunger. But try to budget, if you can and will, for at least some kind of spay-neuter program, so that you can control your pet population. Thank you very much.
Kimberly Parsons.
My name is Kimberly Parsons. We've owned property in the city limits since 2006, lived in the city limits full-time since 2013. I was absent last night marking the one-year anniversary of my dad's death. In December 2018, I showed up at Jane's Feed Store to deliver towels and ended up Friends of Jefferson Animals First President. These days, I mostly help on the administrative side, but I do occasionally assess animals, help with TNR, and I help document animal cruelty and neglect. We've worked scenes that make grown men weep or vomit, and sometimes both at the same time. My family and I provide a home to three rescues that came from within the city limits. We foster lost pets till we can reunite them with their owners, always city residents. We've personally paid a lot of vet bills, groomers' bills, and provided ongoing care out of our own pocket, and I'm here to ask our alderfolks to please reinstate FOGA's funding. First, anyone with even an ounce of common sense knows that animal control is not a need or not a want. It's a need, both for the animals and for the people that live here and visit here. No one is well-served by allowing animals to suffer, starve, breed, and die on our city streets. And no one is served by allowing people to trap pets and dump them in the county, or to hunt and kill pets, both of which are third-degree felonies under Penal Code Section 42.092, by the way. As yet, the city of Jefferson has been unwilling to take on this rule, but you've been happy to let FOGA do it. And without FOGA, animals will not just go away. They breed, spread disease, and in some cases, they cause harm to people and property. Secondly, this is about compassion, and caring isn't a zero-sum game. We can care about lots of things at the same time, animals and kids, and in fact, they go hand in hand. According to research by the American Humane Society of Families Under Investigation for Suspected Child Abuse, 88% of those households have also committed animal abuse. 88%. And that makes me sick that monsters walk among us, and some people don't care because it's just an animal. Well, it might be just an animal today, but it could be a kid tomorrow. And furthermore, we do have measures in place to provide some meals and housing and healthcare for those kids here in Marion County that deserve our caring. But as yet, we don't have anything for animals except for FOGA. And finally, funding FOGA is a practical matter. We need this funding to continue doing what we do and to receive funding from outside sources. That line item is our message as a city to other agencies about whether FOGA is worth their investment. Why should outsiders invest in us if our own neighbors can't be bothered? Maybe that's the message somebody wants to send. We don't care. But I really don't think that's the majority. I think that you aldermen and women are people of common sense, caring, and pragmatism, and I trust that you're gonna speak up for your constituents who want our tax dollars invested in the only animal rescue in our entire county. And I believe there are really very few people who want a storage building that costs more than many of our homes. We want animal welfare, and you're the ones that have a vote. I hope you'll be brave and use your power, no matter who tries to shout you down. Thank you.
Next up is Melissa Moyn.
I would like to start out by saying thank you to all the council members that support FOGA and all of our hard efforts. For the ones who don't, and from you, Ms. Finstrom, shame on you. Shame on you, ma'am. It's disgusting. I wasn't able to make it last night, but I hear some comments that just blew my mind. "Oh, don't feed them. They'll go away. Let nature take its course." Well, let me tell you why that don't work. I live in a neighborhood where animals are dumped all the time. They're not fed. Do they go away? Does nature take its course? No, ma'am. Let me tell you what happens. They form a pack, and these packs get very aggressive. I can tell you two occasions where two people were airlifted out. One almost died due to an attack from these dogs. We had a pack in town. I know everybody out here remembers. It's not too long ago. And I'm at work, and Shaggy is going down the river, and he's making a bend, and there's five dogs ripping a deer to pieces. And he's got a passenger full, he's got a boat full of passengers, you know, and they tore it property. They killed kittens. And they wasn't doing it to eat, either. They were leaving carcasses everywhere. What's gonna happen if that's a tourist or a child? You know, what's gonna happen next time? And not only that, but, you know, what's gonna happen when... Let me see. Okay, they were out there, Shaggy was coming around. He called me. We called the game warden. The game warden come out. My husband and I went out with a gun. We got one. The other four got away. And they stayed in town, and the law enforcement knew they were in town. They were killing cats, dogs, anything they could get. You know, so what's gonna happen to the precious tourism when people hear that our mayor cut the funding to the only animal control that Jefferson has, and that she's okay being an animal killer? The number of dumped unwanted and stray animals in Marion County is atrocious. FOGA works their butts off every single day to get that number down, and it cannot be done without the financial help that the city gives. And like Ms. Parsons said, if the city won't even back us, who else is going to? They're gonna think, "Well, if your city don't give a crap, why should we give a crap?" I'm sorry, but I'm not a heartless person. I cannot starve an animal and watch it die. I can't, and I won't. And that's the difference between you and I. What's gonna happen when the council loses faith in you, Ms. Finstrom, like the citizens already have? Maybe then they will have a loss of confident vote, like we did back in 2012 with Mayor Protangelo. So that's definitely something you need to think about. Thank you.
Next up, Sharon Goldsby.
History of funding animal control by 501(c)(3) is pertinent in Jefferson. I've talked to two former mayors that stated that the city, yes, was providing $13,000 to the former 501(c)(3) that actually blew up in December 2018. Indeed, that was in December. It was during candlelight. It was coming to flood, and it was cold. And Jane's Feed Center was where we ended up with all that. And that's where we started. That's where those dogs were taken. That's how I ended up with that. And I actually took on the sickest ones and took them to a vet and got them there. Within a month, in January of 2019, we formed Friends of Jefferson Animals, another 501(c)(3). We didn't have the land that the former Humane Society had. We didn't have the kennels that that former... We had homes, and we had garages. And it was cold, and it was winter. And people like Kimberly, Kim, I couldn't tell you how many people took these dogs home, and we provided food, shelter, and vet care for over 80 of them at the time. FOGA took over. We didn't have any funding. We started raising money. We did what we could. So the former entity was getting $13,000 a year. I understand the Corps of Engineers was giving that entity $100 per animal picked up. We never got that. When Mayor Baker took office, he took notice of what FOGA had been doing. He invited us over to his house with the city manager at that time, and he was able to get the city council to restore that $13,000 to us. I cannot tell you what that meant to us to get that and to be recognized finally for the work that we had been doing. 100% of the money, as I said last night, that quarterly, that's been given to us since that went into effect, that and more has been spent on city animals, not county. We raised the rest of it through niggles and dimes and donations. We've raised that and more. The county, as of the last six months, has now agreed to step up and help. They will match a branch. We've got the first one into them now. Due to the contributions, small and large, of many of the people that you see out here, we've been able to sustain this. And two and a half years ago, when we finally got transport, hundreds of dogs have been moved out of Marion County and this city to homes in the north, to homes like we people give to our pets when we have them, where they had... give to our pets when we have them, where they had been on the streets malnourished, starving to death. The county's now stepping up to help. So, we've got the transports.
Your time's up.
They're coming out. I got one more thing to say.
No, your time is up.
How many of you?
Your time is, Tino.
Let me finish, let me finish.
Tino, the three minutes is up, Sharon.
Okay.
Everybody has to play by the same rules.
Well, I'm going to tell you something that showed up on the feed last night, because after all of this, people will say, are canceling vacations now?
I don't care. Here still, I do not care. Please sit down. Next up, Carrie Heaster.
I'm glad I don't live here anymore.
Tino.
I don't care. That's what's wrong.
Tino.
That's exactly what's wrong.
You better get up.
Do you have access?
Do you have access? Do you have access? Do you have access? Carrie Heaster.
Madam Mayor and City Council, thanks for allowing me to visit with you. This is the first time I've been to this podium since I left city politics. To be honest with you, I had missed it, but I've sat here and thought about this. First of all, I apologize the way I look. I've been in the hayfield all day, and I didn't get done what I was trying to do because of my phone, and people encouraged me to come this evening to talk to you.
You look good, Carrie.
What I'd like to talk to you about is kind of a three, three thing, though. First last evening was talking about the cemeteries and how much we pay guys to get stuff mowed. Well, most of you know, I've been here 40 years, soon be 40 years. My whole life, I've been involved in funeral business and cemeteries, so I can kind of consider myself an expert. A lot of us think we're experts, but after 47 years, I've kind of learned a little bit about it. What I'd like to say is, though, we pay our guys to contract $31,500 a year to mow three cemeteries. I don't know if you've ever been out there or not, but it's astronomical job to keep all three of them. Then we pay them an additional $26,400 a year to take care of all the rest of city properties, water towers, everything we own, Lions Club Park, Community Park, everything. That's a total of $57,504 a year if I added that correct. My point is, you cannot hire one person or two people and put them on the payroll of the City of Jefferson and get that job done for that amount of money. I promise you. I was in charge of two of them in Marshall, 150 acres. There's no way possible. They provide all the fuel, all the lawn mowers, everything they need themselves. We have no retirement, no insurance, it's contract labor. Now, last evening, we was talking about the problem with them. I've been here when we tried to do it ourselves. I was on the council long enough that we tried to mow it ourselves, we couldn't get it done. We've had several contractors, in my opinion, the people that's mowing it now, it looks better than it's ever looked in the 40 years I've been here. I can call them and tell them we have a funeral at so-and-so lot, would you please dress it up for me? They always make sure they get it done. But anyways, now in our budget, we have $100,000, 50 for the parks and 50 for the cemeteries. If we just step back a minute and think about it, let's say we even bid it and we get it done for $60,000. If we even give those guys a raise at 60,000, that leaves you 40,000. You could still take care of the animals and the cats and still have $24,000 to put towards your $500,000 deficit. That's simple math. I just don't understand it. I really don't. And if you can present a better plan to me to how to take care of those cemeteries and keep all that stuff fixed for less than $57,000, I'd love to see it. The second thing is...
Your time's up.
Their contract includes mowing grass, not cutting trees.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm Shannon Kendrick. I've lived here in Jefferson for about 39 years, and I am a foster for FOGA, and I am a Christian. I have a nine-year-old granddaughter, Charlie. She and I foster together. We are very passionate about helping these animals. In a year and a half's time, we have fostered about 60 puppies. A lot of those came from in-town, some of them came from in the county. We believe it's our obligation to help them, to help those that can't help themselves, to speak for those who can't speak for themselves, not to let them die, Mrs. Finstrom. So I want to share a quick story with you. Back in early part of May, we were made aware of some puppies that needed help. So one of our volunteers, CJ Woods, he went out and picked them up, and they were tiny puppies, they were about four weeks old. There were only two left in the litter, the rest of them had already died. There were two tiny girls, two, they were about two and three pounds, covered in fleas, infested with parasites to the point that they were very anemic and near death. CJ was nice enough to give them a bath, and Dina brought them to me that evening. We agreed to foster them. And I'm sure a lot of people here don't know the signs of, that a puppy has parasites, but it's a bloated belly. These girls were very skinny, they were malnourished, but their little bellies were so bloated. So we recognized that, and we immediately began treating them with a medication by the name of Panacure. Panacure is a medication that we oftentimes use to treat puppies. It works well, but it's not cheap, we have to pay for it. Panacure causes their little bodies to pass the parasites in their stool. In this case, these little puppies were infested with roundworms. So when they had bowel movement, I would find piles of what looked like angel hair pasta. Sometimes these parasites are dead when they come out, sometimes they're still alive. So, had we turned a blind eye, Mrs. Finstrom, and let nature take its course, these puppies would have, without a doubt, been dead in a matter of days. And I don't know about you, but I would imagine that having the life sucked out of you by parasites is not a pleasant way to die. But you know what? This story has a happy ending because of FOGA and because of people that care enough to foster with some time, medication, good food, and love. Today, they are living very good lives. After about six weeks, we got it.
Time's up. Colt Johnson.
Hi, my name is Colt Johnson. I have, I was born in Jefferson, and I've lived here for the grand majority of the 35 years I've been on this planet. Never been up here before, and this mayor, I am not here to criticize you or critique your opinions on anything. I just want to get up here and let everyone know how I feel. I came up here to speak about Jefferson Police Department, which I will, but I feel like I would be remiss to not say something about FOGA as I come up here as well. You know, honestly, the government changes ever so often, and you may not know, a lot of people in town still don't even know that you are the mayor right now. I mean, that is just a thing that happens. But I will say that when it comes to animals and animal control, people know who Dina Carroll is and may not even know what her face is like. And that's the thing, is like, when you go, like, no one's calling 911, no one's calling the police department to try to handle these things, as much anyway. I'm sure the police department still gets plenty of animal calls, but these things are being shuffled off onto these people who are taking their time and volunteering and doing everything to try to make this not a problem for us. I am not an animal person myself. I'm not someone who just goes, ooh, cuddly cuddly with kittens and dogs, but I do know it gives me a sense of relief to know that I can send them to Dina or to FOGA, and I know that the animal's going to be taken care of well, and that it's going to be done humanely. And that's just, that's something that we all need to have in this town. Moving on to the Jefferson Police Department, okay? That's why I'm really up here to speak, because that is what's most on my heart. The Jefferson Police Department has given us so much and a sense of security that we now have that honestly, I haven't felt in the other 35 years that I've been here. It truly, truly does. And it was said last night that they may have a flamingon budget, and while I don't necessarily agree that that budget is flamingon, even if it is, I want a flamingon service. I want flamingon accessibility. I want to know that when I call the police, there's someone there to come. And that's definitely something that, like, everyone talks about the tourists. I love the tourists as much as anyone. I'm a general manager at a business here in town. The tourists are the lifeblood. But it's just think about the people that live here, they're just as important, and I think that the police department does just as much for them as it does for the tourists. So let's just please consider that if we could. Thank you.
Stephen Shaw.
I wasn't born here, but we got here as quick as we could. Kim and I live here in town, we also own four rental properties, and we have seven tenants, five of them who will vote for or against y'all. In regards to not spending money on new projects until existing issues are dealt with, Madam Mayor, I agree with you. Specifically, the address sewer and water projects. Question is, if city's underfunded, why are you looking at spending so much money on building a new city hall? Just modify this building or even look at the train depot. City already owns the land, just make a deal with Diamond Don and use that for a new city hall. As far as putting restrooms in Lions Park, this group was complaining last night that they're having trouble keeping the existing one clean. Why do you want to spend more money and double your expenses and double your headaches? There's already porta-potties out there, we see people go to them all the time. And looking for a solution and not just being up here complaining, I pulled up this list and I handed it out to everybody up here. And this is a list of all the properties the City of Jefferson already owns, it's on the tax truck off list. If you were to sell all these properties at a tax sale, they're worth over $400,000. If you even got half of that, you'd have nearly a quarter of a million dollars to use to help balance the budget. It's not going to cost you anything to do it, so there's a possible source of revenue for you, and I gave you the list of them so you know where they are. Finally, in addressing the mayor's statement that she's repeated several times about not wanting to spend money on animals when there are kids going without food or medical care, I did some research. There are currently four programs that are available and active here in Jefferson to feed the kids. In regards to healthcare for low-income families, there's CHIPS, there's Medicaid, there's the Marion County Health and Resource Coalition that I helped Will Thomas set up, that's also available for free medical care. And may not know it, but in 2023, the Texas Health and Safety Code was amended by the legislature that mandates all Texas counties provide indigent healthcare at no cost if there's no public medical facility in that county. So in my professional legal opinion, City of Jefferson cannot usurp the responsibility of the county and spend funds in this manner. Let the county do their job. So, if you have no reason to save the city to spend money for low-income and healthcare, or if you already have it in the budget someplace, take it out and use it for something else. In support of FOGA.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I just wanted to say that I love this little town of ours. Out of all the small towns that Steve and I could have moved to, we decided to move to Jefferson. I've always been an animal lover, and Steve and I have rescued multiple dogs over the years. I do like cats, but I'm extremely allergic to them. I wish I could help with the cat colonies, but I just can't. We do support FOGA financially, though. I got involved with FOGA during the failure of the Dixie Humane Society. I was on the front lines cleaning up after those neglected animals, and I can't unsee what I saw out there. It literally broke my heart. So, there was a need for volunteers in this community, and this community stepped up and filled the gap where the Humane Society had fallen through. The Bible commands us to take care of the less fortunate, and this commandment is not mutually exclusive to humans or animals. We are commanded to help them both. Matthew 6:26 says, "Look at the fowl of the air, for they sow not, neither do they reap, nor gather into barns; yet your heavenly Father feeds them." If God feeds the birds and takes care of them, we should be willing to take care of a few stray cats and dogs. We are supposed to be like God. The majority of the people feeding the colonies are not financially supported by FOGA, they do it out of the kindness of their heart. And feeding the cats does not multiply them. I don't know where we're getting this, like, if you feed them, then they just keep multiplying. And we have had way more cats in this town than we do now. The Trap Neuter and Release Program is a way to curtail cats multiplying. When the program was first introduced to the town, a friend of mine said to me, "We should have done this program 10 years ago, and we wouldn't have the problem we have now." Also, I would like to point out that feral cats do keep our mice and rat population down. They do have a purpose here. And a few years ago, like Melissa already mentioned, we did have that aggressive pack of dogs that were running around town and took down a deer. So, if you defund FOGA, I'm saying this personally, don't call Dina or Sharon. They did not say I could say this, but I'm saying, do not call them. The animal control problem will be in your lap and your lap only. And as for a climate-controlled storage for the city and the police department, why don't you use the current chamber building? I'm not against the chamber, but I'm just saying, if a city needs a building, y'all already own the chamber building, use that for storage. And that's what I wanted to say tonight. Thank you for listening to me.
Ms. Canair?
Sorry.
I live on Alley Street. I came last night, and I got a little upset by what you said. And I just, I couldn't, I couldn't go without saying. These girls work so hard, from early in the morning, all day, all night, and they don't quit until they can bring the animals. I live on Alley Street in a mobile home. The man who lived behind me was a cat, what do you call him? Hoarder. He had about 25 cats, maybe 30. He passed away from cancer. Somebody had to take care of. So I get up every morning, I take care of them. A friend of mine helped me build a house for them, so they wouldn't freeze. And at night, I feed them, and a lot of my neighbors are not happy about the cats, but I said, they're one of God's creatures. Somebody has to take care of. And I've been so mad all day long, and I listened to you last night. What really, really upset me when I got ready to leave was you said that Dina and Sharon and all these people who do all this hard work around here, it was more important to take the $17,000 and feed the hungry children. Well, I don't think you've ever seen a hungry child. If you're willing to turn your back on a little animal and not feed it and not take care of it, you're not going to feed a hungry child. And let me tell you, what's coming up on your porch is not the cats. Cats go and dig a hole, do their job, and bury it. You live in a place where there are quite a few coons, so you need to go outside and check for the coons, because that's what's coming up on your porch. Thank you.
I've been living in Jefferson for over, close to three decades. Jefferson Police Department really has been a lifesaver for me. Police Department really has been a lifesaver for me. I'm not talking about anybody else, but recently, I was out of country, and thank Tino and Mary, they saved my wife. We had a lady, she was completely out of control, and he controlled it. I just want to mention one thing. Please, if y'all could, y'all want to cut the corners, you get what you pay for. You want to eat burrito from Taco Bell? How about it? You want to have El Chico, Papa Ciro's, they both feed you, but you get what you pay for. If you cut it, believe me, we are going to suffer for it. And I'm an animal lover myself. Most everybody knows, if the cat come around my restaurant, I'll feed them outside, I'll put the food for them. They come to my house, I've got a big stack of food. Please, whatever you do, do not harm those animals. Let's help them out. Again, please, Tino, thank you. Mary, thank you for what all you do. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Kay Cannon.
Mayor Finstrom, City Council Members, Kay Cannon, City of Jefferson resident. Last night, 2025 proposed budget meeting was an absolute fiasco. I sincerely feel that the city and citizens that share concerns as voices for the animals regarding the reduction of funding to Jefferson animals fell on deaf ears. My mind is made up, I'm not budging. Mayor Finstrom, you are an elected official. You were placed in your official office by Jefferson citizens, who expect you to listen to concerns that occur with an open mind. You heard many unbelievable remarks to stop feeding them. God's got this. Shame on you. I agree that we do have a feral cat-dog problem. I agree feeding cats is not helping the problem. Animal control is going to be an ongoing battle. It's not going to just go away because we quit feeding them. This is not a FOGA problem. This is a City of Jefferson problem. Without them, y'all are, I don't know what's going to happen. Next, I'd like to address last night that you mentioned to reduce, delete the Jefferson Salutes America, $10,000 proposed from the budget to help balance. If you choose to proceed with that action, the 30-plus-year event will not happen. The crew of EB does not make money on this event. The youth group organizations will lose a fundraising opportunity. The local businesses will miss lots of foot traffic. The city will lose an event that brings thousands of people to Jefferson annually. Lastly, I challenge you to handle future council meetings in a more professional manner than you did last night. I was absolutely appalled at how you belittled Council Member Bubba Haggard publicly. That was totally unprofessional. There are things that you do in private, and that was one of them. Thank you.
Jim Stacy.
Madam Mayor and Council, thank you so much for your time, the opportunity to come up here. First of all, too, I remember on the agenda for yesterday's meeting and this meeting, these are workshop meetings for budget proposals, and I get that. It's probably not going to look a whole lot like what it looks, what it has in the past, or what it's looking like right now as the proposal. Good luck. I'd want to bring up a couple of other important points, some related to FOGA, some other things as well with respect to the budget. Hollis mentioned specifically that the majority of the contacts he received were from people out at the lake, outside of the city of Jefferson. Did you by any chance, Hollis, did you by any chance mention to them that since they're outside the city, that they should talk to their county commissioner and/or the county judge? And that's something for all of you. I get you're going to get calls from everybody. I understand that. Hopefully everybody is, it was a great opportunity to do that. If you didn't, if you did, great. Next, money's not being thrown at animal control or FOGA. It really is making a difference. And stopping midstream, stopping the funding is, it's like, it makes no sense at all. I know there's money out, there's a lot of decisions to be made, but it is working. And it needs to be worked, working as a partnership with the city, FOGA, and the citizens of this city. It's everybody's problem, and everybody is trying to work with it. To say money is being thrown away or thrown at a problem, that's kind of very surprising and disappointing. Next thing is comparing various budgets, our city to other cities is, really doesn't make any sense to me. Jefferson and Linden are two completely different cities. We're a huge tourist city, and there's a lot, there's a lot more need for law enforcement, especially on the weekends when we have things going on. One thing I would like to say with respect to the police, they need, you know, I don't know, I don't know that I've ever seen them stop anybody on 59. There's a, you know, they cost a lot of money. They need to be bringing some money in, too. Also, also with respect to the, to the budget process, two things I'd like to see happen is the department heads need to be in front of all of y'all as a group, so they can answer your questions and justify. But then, you also have to have not just a workshop, but a town hall meeting to get feedback from the citizens. That's, I know you're running the meetings the way they're supposed to be run. Thank you for that. Couple other things.
Jim, your time's up.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Ashley Bostic.
Hello, and thank you for having me. I'm still fairly new to Jefferson. It's a beautiful town. It sells itself. I'm happy to live here. But I have to say that I'm friends with the FOGA and the police department, because I think it's God's given gift to be able to take care of anything that has breath, and our ability to take care of something that needs our help. And I don't think cutting budgets there is going to help that. As well as that, you know, the cats in the town, they get rid of the rodents, the snakes, the bugs. I prefer that. But at the same time, too, there are some very terrible pet owners here. I have seen, since I've been here, dogs running around that shouldn't be. I mean, I remember seeing posts all over Jefferson over people asking, "Whose dog is this? Whose dog is this? Just walking around town, beautiful collar." And everybody kept trying to catch it and come together, and next thing you know, that dog is now dead on the side of 59, right in front of where I work. And I have to stare at it all day. It's nothing but bones. And my son is scarred over it, picking him up from daycare, to the point that where the next day and the next day, coming home from daycare, the teachers have to tell me that, "Your son's having a problem. He's talking about birds and bones and dead bodies." And I'm like, "Oh, honey, oh, God." It's the dog that was unfortunately found in front of where I work, because it had, it had a collar, and that's the sad thing about it. But there have been some very bad pet owners. And I don't think cutting a budget is going to help. I don't think it's a good, it's a bad idea. But at the same time, I know that they've helped, and they've come to rescue so many animals, because even though this was a sad situation, my son also made friends with a one-eyed cat that I know was rescued by our friends in FOGA. So, thank you for your time, and that's all I have to say.
Rob Baker.
Evening, Madam Mayor, Council. This is Melissa. Just want to add a couple clarifications. So let's talk animal control, since we seem to be talking about that a lot. There's a question last night on why animal control is part of the police budget. So the line item is meant for a state of Texas licensed animal control officer, so it belongs in the police budget. It's also for any kind of initiatives, any kind of materials or programs related to animal control. So you have two options. Either put it in administrative donations, or you put an expense like this, a donation to FOGA, in the animal control line. To me, it was more transparent to be in the animal control line, so it stands out to anybody, no matter what city they live in, even if it's Jefferson and they, they're not familiar with the budget. So it's transparency. It's about getting that spending line out there that the city is investing in animal control. So, just a little historical lesson there. The other one, it seemed last night that, so we run a weak mayor system, no offense to you or me or former Mayor Heaster. The lack of the vote is just called a weak mayor system. I didn't like it either, but that's okay. That means the six of y'all vote, if there's a tie, it goes to the mayor. Last night, it was pretty apparent that Hollis wasn't interested in donating to FOGA. Ray had some conditional thoughts, which was great, and the other four were clearly on the support FOGA line. Just vote it in. Just be done with it. Just vote it in. And if it's not done that way, you just don't approve a budget, Council. You just don't approve the budget. You shut down the city. Thank you.
Gail Robertson.
Good afternoon. I live in the county. Back when Dixie was going on, I came to Dixie to volunteer. It took me months to get in. When I finally got in was when PETA came and the dogs out there. So, we had PETA here, and the sheriff's department was all in uproar. I went out there, she finally let me in. The condition was horrible. I came home every night and just cried, not knowing what to do. So I started taking pictures. So I started taking pictures and cleaning out those dog kennels. They were living in filth this thick. I went down to the police department. He had his feet kicked up on the desk, and it was, it was just not respectful. So anyway, I got my pictures and I put it on the web. Oh, that blew everybody up. All of a sudden, the whole board disappeared, and I got a criminal trespass. Thank God that Dina and these people came and stood behind me, because I couldn't go out on property anymore. I had already filled up a dumpster full of dog crap. And I, it was horrible. But anyway, let's get down to what I came here for. Tourism, that's what everybody wants, is tourism. Well, people travel with pets. They do Woodstock. That's a two-day event. It brings tourists into the city, and it doesn't cost the city anything. The quality of life for people. We answer so many calls, and Dina answers tons of them. I try to take care of my community at the lake. I'm sorry, I'm boring you. I try to take care of my community at the lake. I pay to have the animals spayed and neutered. Very few I send through Friends of Jefferson Animals. I put over $3,000 this year already just in kennels. Dina works very hard for this community to make it a better place. How dare you do this? Pet-friendly cities draw more tourists and more businesses than those that don't permit animals. Right now, there are 70 million households that own a pet. People are coming to pet-friendly towns. They're not going to come here if we can't take care of these animals. When I came here on leave, the first thing I saw when I crossed the railroad track up here by Bruce Hume's old place was a dog starving to death. It had the mange. And here it is, how many years later, and we can't get away from it. But I was seeing hope.
Your time's up. Dina.
Yes.
Well, I'm going to finish Sharon Goolsbee's statement first. So, last night, it was said we could raise the money. How, how many of you have seen your money deplete over the last few years, right? So just because we did it in 2023 doesn't mean we'll do it again in 2024. We live in one of the poorest counties in Texas. When writing grants, the question is always, what is your municipality doing for you? What will answer, your answer be from now on, Ms. Finstrom? We need this $16,000 and more. Without FOGA, this falls to Tino and his officers and on tourism. In some of those threads last night, after viewing your broadcast, there were comments like, "I'm canceling my vacation in two weeks and not coming here." "I'm glad I don't live there anymore," and on and on. I've been proud to be where I was born and reared. I've been proud to be a part of FOGA, Tourism, the Library and Historic Foundation, but right now, I'm disappointed to know that animal control is being basically destroyed by the city. My siblings and I were brought up to love and care for animals, whether they be ours, the neighbors', or strays'. And I'll also say that while we reach out to help animals in dire situations, if we find those owners in the same situations, guess what? We reach out and we get them assistance as well. So therefore, we're asking that you restore the $16,000. Sharon Goolsbee. So after yesterday's display of lack of awareness to not just a city or a county issue, but a humane issue, FOGA's prepared to disclaim and/or deny the city's offer of the $500 in funding, and here's why. First, the city lacks animal control services. As many of you know, FOGA, with the help of the city's funding, effectively served as the city's quasi-de facto animal control group, fulfilling a critical function in accordance with the Texas Tort Claims Act. If we do not accept the city's $500 offer, the city has no immunity from a lawsuit, and if a tourist or a resident is harmed by a stray animal, you have no immunity. As you're well aware, the city received notice in April of 2022 about dangers posed by stray animals, particularly packs of wild dogs, that they don't go away. They form packs naturally when not controlled. We controlled those situations by trapping the wild dogs that were chasing residents, killing homeowners' pets, and domesticated animals alike. Lastly, we chose to not accept, if we choose to not accept the paltry $500 allocation, it is because, as you know, we relied on the city's promise of continued support. The city's failure to inform us earlier about this funding cut has left us with no time to seek alternative fundraising options to not only the detriment of FOGA, but also the residents and tourists alike. Therefore, if we choose to deny the $500 in funding, not only would that place animal control back in the city police department's lap, who is ill-prepared and unable to respond, trap, contain, feed, and vet animals, but it would also mean that the city has no immunity from lawsuits. And as you know, a lawsuit's going to cost you a whole lot more than $16,000.
At this, at this time, we will go into our budget workshop.
The budget is uploaded to the website, if y'all would like to take a look at it.
The budget is uploaded to the website if y'all would like to take a look at it.
Ah, there.
I don't have a worksheet. I guess it means we can take the $500 out.
Okay. So, we can start at the beginning and work our way through. I worked on this all day today and thought I had it, had it balanced. And then I found out I didn't. That happens. I, I know where it is, but that's beside the point. So, we could start going over, if y'all would like, page by page, or you may want to look at it and ask questions. Melissa also had posted on the webs, on her Facebook, on, on her email, what the questions that have been asked about the line items, what they, what they're for.
So, I guess I will go first. On my thoughts on, I see, you know, some of the revision. And of course, the big elephant in the room on animal control. I do think we should leave the line in the police department budget as Rob spoke about. But just me personally, as for my vote or what, what we are talking about, I, I will not be able to pass the budget with just moving animal control to 1,000. I feel like there's other places that we can go get money from. As far as, for example, I looked at just on the mowing contract. We can take $6,359 out of that and then on-
Tell us where you're looking at this.
I'm looking at, I was just looking at last night.
Oh, okay.
We can take the $6,359 out of mowing contract. And then as far as city building cleanup, each year, we have not used anything out of it. So, I don't see why we need to add an extra $10,000.
It's been taken out.
Okay. So, you took that out. So, I guess I need to look at the new to figure out where I'm going to get my other 10,000 from. So, but that was my, my plan to get the 10,000 from the, the city cleanup. But I think because if you look at the past, they have used every cent of their $16,000. They have used every cent of it. And then we have new items to where we don't know if we're going to, to use the money. So, I think for me, I won't be able to approve anything until we get it back to where it is. And that's just me. Because we, I work with children. I work with families all the time. And it would just be horrendous if somebody did get hurt when we do not have a plan in place. If we had a plan in place, yes, we can revisit. We maybe could cut. But as of right now, we don't have anything in place. We have no solution, no resolution. And I don't feel like we should make any changes. I think it needs to go back up to the $16,359. And that's just where I stand. And it seems like a couple of other people, that's where they stand unless they change their mind since last night.
I'm for the 16,000 as well. I, I, I got a two before on the head, you know. I picked up the horseshoe and it was hot. I say that we also restore the budget to FOGA. And we can take it either partially from the, the mowing contract or from the, I don't think that we need restrooms at Lions Park.
We took that out too.
You took that out? Okay.
Yeah. And that was never going to happen through this budget.
So, I, I think we can easily find the funding to restore the 16,000. And I believe they also had sent a letter asking for a 10% increase.
Are y'all going to increase them 10% and not our employees that are making $12 an hour?
Well, I was just saying that if we can give, we can add that $500. Let's make it 16,500. You'd already put the 500 to it. We'll just add the 16 to that.
I mean, or some of us up here, we give, give away our little bit of salary that we get. It's not like, hey, that adds a little bit extra. So, not saying that we have to increase anymore, but I do want it to be at the six, where it is now. I, we cannot cut them when we don't have anything in place. I mean, we can't, we know that there is a problem. We know that. I don't care how we feel. And this is the thing, and I will say this. Everybody that knows me know that I try to operate on love. I wanted to actually get up and hug you only because my grandmother passed away. And she passed away a couple of weeks ago. So, dealing with grief and dealing with all this and then to see all of this, you know, fighting and all of this stuff, it's just really ridiculous to me. Like, we want people to come here. We want people to, we want to talk about. This is a perfect town. Let me just finish. If, if it's three minutes that I get, let me get. Because we can sit up here and yell and fuss and even when you say people's name, it's like such an attitude. We can't operate like that. You are the head and we are the body. And although the head, you have to have arms. You have to have legs. You have to have feet. And that's what we are. And so, we have to go in sync. We have to try to work together with people. We can't keep operating like this. Like it or not, because you're sitting up there getting fussed at, it's, my heart is pumping too. Because I feel bad too. And I hate for you to have to take on all of that, but it is what it is.
Okay. I'll just, if y'all want to put it in there, that's fine. Tell me where you want to cut.
I want to put it back in there. I, we just got this. So, we really, I mean, we have to go. I have my little notes from, from this right here. But I, I got to go back and now and find where I'm going to, we're going to cut it from. Or I propose that we're cutting from, not saying that I'm making y'all do anything. But we have to put it back in. And now I'll go and see where I want to put it back in.
Let me ask you this too. I mean, you know, we're sitting here trying to micromanage the police department's budget. And don't we need Tino up here to where we can ask him where he can cut and all that?
Tino, come up here, please. And I'm saying it sweetly. Okay.
Thank you all for allowing me to come up here and discuss the police department budget.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for coming up.
What questions do we have regarding?
Well, I'd just like you to go down the line on your, your budget. Let us, you know, like where it's being raised quite a bit, what the justification for it is and stuff like that, what we know. You know, I, I personally don't know what you need and what you don't need, you know.
Right, right. So, we're gonna, we're not going to touch payroll or do we want to touch payroll?
No.
I don't want to touch you.
No.
So, office supplies, is that where we're going to start then?
Yes, let's do that.
Office supplies and printing. We have a RICO printer. It is contracted. Everything is printed on that one printer. We have no separate printers. Everything from offense reports to crash reports, it all gets printed. Anything, public information requests that we receive gets printed off of it as well. So, we have eight computers connected to it and heavily used. Was there a proposed? Yes. So, we raised it up only because of standard increases that we have ink that, it is RICO. RICO is putting out.
Are you leasing that printer?
We are leasing it. It is under contract. I believe it's the same style of contract that City Hall uses.
Okay. I know with my lease, we get-
A printer allowance, something like that.
We get the ink.
Yeah.
We get, we get the powdered.
And there's a standard rate. Whenever we go over it, it does go up. And we do print a lot of paper. I really wish we could digitize. I'm 100% behind digitization. But we all know that takes time to digitize. I know the county went back and they had to find some monies to digitize all their archives. But I am 100% in moving in that direction, especially as our technology is pushing forward for iCloud usage. I'm also entertaining the idea of less equipment, such as burning CDs for court cases, burning discs, data discs. That, that's the style we're at. We're at CD-ROM, burn a disc, put all the videos on it. And in some cases, depending on the size of the footage, we'll have 15 discs per case. We are moving to a new level of electronically sharing for computers. And we're also storing in-house on hard drives with redundant hard drives, which are a lot cheaper over time than 500 discs. So, and moving on down, do we have any questions regarding, regarding office supplies and printing?
No. No. I mean, basically, another question I had on the, on the overtime. Why is the overtime going up so much from about, from this past budget to the proposed one? It's going from 21. I see where you've actually spent 28.
Right.
Why are we using more of the overtime now than what we were?
So, right now, we do have that officer shortage since October and overtime's coming from that.
Oh, having to work everybody more?
Yes. Everyone's working.
All right.
Divided, you divide one full 84 hours over the four of us, five of us, and that's what you're going to get, overtime expenditures. And we do try to utilize part-time work, our part-timers. I joke with them, I'd rather use a part-time than a full-time because we have to pay them less. And originally, $15 an hour.
Well, are those, are those pretty available, the part-timers? I mean-
Well, they normally have full-time jobs as well, doing other work. So, we're having to pull them in. I know Cynthia Simmons is one part-time officer that we use. She works full-time for JP One as a clerk. So, there, she's off Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. She's been back and forth on night shift for Friday and Saturdays on those weekends that one officer would work. And we do have a daytime officer who is on sick leave, modified work, and she is covering that shift during the day.
Are you having any success at recruiting?
So, just recently, I've had some potential applicants come forward. It is a struggle across East Texas with finding work. In every profession, everyone's suffering from it. I have one person who's interested and at no obligation to the city, no liability. We did sponsor someone to go and it was more of the city saying that they can be a certified police officer. The police academy takes up all the liability in putting that person through and they're covering the entire expenses themselves, not us. With that, I am allowing that individual to come in and ride whenever they feel like it to see and hopefully, at the end of their academy experience and post-certification, they're able to say, Jefferson's where I want to be. So, there's one of those and some other individuals like, I would tell you monthly, I sit down with an individual who's interested in law enforcement and we speak for about an hour, an hour and a half, usually six, seven at night, and talk to them on their path to becoming a police officer in hopes of inspiring an individual. And it just takes coaching citizens often on that. Does that make sense? Do we want to discuss fuel? Discuss fuel real quick. So, with fuel, right now, there are two separate processes I know the city's using. One being a storage tank at the water plant and, which is really good for the guys. We were utilizing it for a while. And then, of course, at times, we would run out of fuel out there at the water plant. And it was not because of Allen at all. It was because of our supplier finding, getting down there random times when they could. So, we got with KIMs and they were able to supply us with fleet cards. And we essentially pay the exact same price that we would pl, we would pay wholesale, just a better quality. Because it's not going in a 50-year-old oil tank above the ground rusting away. It is good to maintain that kind of thing where we do have two separate. And I've talked to Allen in the past before moving to the fleet card system. There's accountability on us. It knows where all of our monies are going, where all the cars are fleeting up, are filling up. We were able to compare that with making sure there's no, no one being untrue with fuel usage. At the same time, in the event of emergency, which we've experienced in the past where we lose power for a substantial period of time, law enforcement, of course, is expected to always be operational. And having that reserve tank that Allen has at his plant is always a good, good way to have that excess of fuel if we need it.
Tino, I want to ask you, do your officers keep their patrol cars at home?
They do. They do.
Are they, are they using them for their personal use as well?
They, they better not be. No.
Okay. So, they're not allowed to use those?
They are not.
If they go visit a friend or go to the store or?
No, no.
Okay.
So, they are take-home vehicles and there are strict rules and policies within the agency that we put out.
And do, do the police officers live in town?
They do not. Do not. I do have a radius of 12 miles, 15-minute response time from where they reside. We have someone north of Marshall and someone right in Linden. And everyone else is within five-minute response time. Right outside the city limits.
Would it become a hardship if they didn't have the patrol cars to drive to and from work?
They would lose a benefit, is what I would say. I would put it as a benefit loss. Everyone, kind of a culture change in law enforcement. Marshall, at one time, took them forever because they had a lot of officers, did not do that. Then they transitioned to it. I don't know if y'all see every round, now and then a Marshall police officer driving through town. It's because they're going to their house. It's not uncommon. It's almost expected to some limits of, I become police officer, there's a company car provided kind of thing. There are rules. But with, it's also important to note that at one point, we did not have it. And then all the officers and every officer for Jefferson knows that they are expected in the event of something happening, they must respond. Every officer is on call at any time. The only stipulation is they provide to us when they're going to be out of town. So, being able to respond to the city and go right to the scene is very important.
Yeah. I wouldn't, I would not want them to be at home, have to come into town to get their car. I think that's a delay in service. It's a delay in care. They need to be able to, if they are home, go directly to the scene where there's the dash cam and all of that. So, I, I want them to continue to take their cars home.
I'll agree with that.
As far as, well, I guess we can go down to the automobiles and the maintenance and everything. It's another item, so.
Yeah. I'd like to ask about the maintenance. We just got through signing on the, for repairs for one of the 18 Tahoe for about $8,000. I mean, are you going to have to raise the maintenance budget? We're almost, we'll be over this year by the time we pay that bill.
Right, right. So, that's what happens when, of course, we're not cycling out the vehicles. There was at one time a question, why are they always running? We have since addressed that culture of leaving them running. They turn off. The newer or the older vehicles, I would say the Charger and things like that. Now, technology is being put into those vehicles, automatic shut-off amps. After so long, there's a timeout period. So, we're not leaving them running. So, I want y'all to know that. We're not just out there letting them run. Separate from that, there will be vehicle repairs. It will be a thing if we're not cycling out vehicles. Engine fans will start going out to cool the vehicles. We're in the hottest part of the summer. I have one Charger. It's our oldest Charger. We're in the hottest part of the summer, I have one Charger, it's our oldest Charger. That is, the AC unit is, is having trouble keeping up with the heat. Hoses are gonna break as they're running, as they're accelerating to catch up to high-speed individuals. Just things like that, if you're going, you know, code three is what we call it, to an emergency call. It goes from zero to fast, so it is putting pressure on hoses, engines. So, it will continue to go up if we're not cycling out vehicles. I did my best, and I brought this to y'all in the past on updating the police department, and I, I will continue to do that. We try to find the most qualified individual to, to work on the vehicles. We're not afraid to branch out, outside of our area to different mechanics if we can get a better price. I promise you, I do my due diligence on searching for the best tire. Somotomos, I don't know if you've heard of them, they're police rated tires. Never heard of it, but something that we have to consider, everything from that, who's gonna be working on it, to how often is it being worked on? You know, I understand that that is an impact on the budget.
I have a question on your payroll. I think when you first walked up, you're not gonna deduct anything from your payroll, is that what you said, or something like that?
That's correct.
Do you actually have enough? Because if you look at it now, and I think what your payroll is budgeted and what you've actually used through the year, you only have about fifty-something thousand left. Okay, and when we have events in town and stuff like that, you add extra officers and stuff, so those are being paid out of the payroll, which goes to overtime and stuff like that. So, actually, do you have enough to meet it to the end of the year to pay your officers on the events coming up? Tour of homes, a Christmas parade, and all that other kind of stuff? So, maybe that's, you know, I'm trying to help you out, that's one thing to look at, is, okay, you only have fifty-something thousand left till the end of the year, and now we're coming into our seasonal Christmas season, you know, when it cools off, and that's when you're gonna need the money because you're gonna have extra officers.
Well, that's a different physical year.
Huh?
It's a different physical year, New Year starts in October first.
But then, if he leaves his budget the same for the following year, he may run into a problem then.
Well, you're right.
So, I'm saying, you know, you gotta be proactive sometimes instead of reactive.
No, I agree, I agree.
Well, that's the only thing, Chief, I've gotta mention.
No, I understand. There was a, a problem identified in the payroll from the past, and that was training was never accounted for. There was part-time work, which came, I believe it was part-time that came out of payroll, Melissa, and holidays. I don't know if holidays were included.
Not like you were figuring it out.
Not like we were. So, we've made, since made those adjustments, and we're expected to be right on track this time. We, I was, it was brought to my attention in January, February, I believe. And I'm thinking, you know, we really didn't account for that kind of thing.
Yeah, okay, that's, okay, I'm not gonna travel fifty-nine, okay?
Apparently, we're not on it.
Well, on this, on this five thousand dollars for the legal, is that for this attorney that does our collections? Is that what that is? Line fifty-three forty, there wasn't anything for the last year or so, but it's, it's in the new budget.
Legal and accounting?
Yes.
That's not, I don't know, Melissa, what legal accounting?
I mean, where do we pay, where do we pay the lawyers that do our, you know, that collect money for, for him? What line item does that come out of?
I, I think is gonna be for your audit.
The audit portion?
Yes, your portion of the audit.
Our portion of the audit.
Did we not pay this in the past?
In last?
We paid it in twenty-three.
Yeah.
We paid ten thousand in twenty-three.
They used to kind of break that out among all the departments, you know, whenever the accounting bill would come in or something, you'd break it into different ones, so I guess that's what it was.
So, we have legal accounting, and then we have accounting.
Are we on the police department?
Yes.
Yes.
One's fifty-three forty, and one's fifty-three forty-five.
Accounting fees, and then?
Well, I just wondered, where, you know, when we do write the check to that, that law firm for collecting your fines and stuff like that, where do we take, what line item is that charged to?
So, just, I think, so y'all know, when invoices come in, the department heads code them, city council reviews the invoice, they approve it and initial it, city council signs the checks, the accounts get paid. I don't see that. I reconcile the checking accounts, check number to bank statements, I don't see the invoices. If y'all need to know what goes through it, ask me ahead of time.
Well, I was just?
I'll be happy to print it off.
Well, I just wondered what, you know, what we'd been char, if it's a new item, and it wasn't like this past year, you know, what have we normally been charging it to, just a question. You know, I know we, it was a pass-through, because, you know, whenever I questioned that one time, they said, well, you know, we collect that from the perpetrator. Big word there. We collect it from them, and it's just a pass-through to send to that, to them, but I didn't know whether that was charged to a particular line item.
I would review, I would review that. I think they may take out of that automatically before we receive.
Before we receive the funds, don't they deduct their fees?
I do believe so, yes.
From the cash?
Yes, because I, now that you brought that up, I'm thinking, you know, I've never seen that bill come through, but now?
They're not gonna take any chances, I'm missing their money.
They won't, they won't.
So, before we move on, it's the legal and accounting fees y'all wanna know, right? Right, fifty-three forty?
That's not a big deal, I was just wanting to know.
But I, we need to be transparent and completely understand what we're doing here. So, I think it's good questions for you to ask, I, I would like to be prepared.
Well, yeah, well, I, I just think, because there's nothing there for year twenty-four on the adopted budget, so I just, I think, yeah.
It does look like, there's, these, there are, it is a division between the departments. There are a couple of those where we never see it come through our department, it automatically gets coded once it's received equally among, among the departments.
Insurance is one of those.
Yes.
He doesn't see the insurance. So, I, so far, I have the legal and accounting fees, and then the accounting fees. Was there any others that you wanted to see a breakdown?
On the police department, on the phone, it shows almost twelve thousand dollars somewhere in there on the budget. But then, when I go back over to administration, that's the room next door, isn't it? That's only three thousand dollars.
They have more cell phones?
Oh, the cell phones are all covered by that?
They have their cell phones, and they have their, their office phone.
Okay, I thought it was just office, it's cell phones and everything?
Yes.
Okay.
And this technology deal, is that the head for that monthly charge that we just bought the stuff for? That that will be the body cam?
That is why it's increased, yes, for the cloud storage.
Yeah.
Yes, that's why it's increased.
That's why, that's bought, okay. That's all I have. The people have spoken.
You don't wanna talk about the vehicle, Bubba?
Well, I don't know if you can buy it for fifty.
So, where, where did we have it set at?
Well, you know, the thing is, it depends on, you know, if we was to ask the, you know, I know I'm a broken record on this, but, you know, at EdcoG, to see if they give us twenty-five grand to buy a car with, and we'll, you know, whenever we get a representative appointed to that, then maybe they can find out some details for us, hopefully.
Right, right. And I'm, I'm not opposed to it at all.
Well, it's just, they just write you a check.
Right.
I guess that's what they told me.
When did we buy the last patrol car?
Oh, it was purchased twenty-three.
I was saying it was last year or sometime like that.
It would have been probably at the beginning of last year, I believe, the beginning of twenty-three. Yes. And they were hard to come by, every vehicle's hard to come by.
And that was fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars.
So, do we think we're actually able to find a vehicle for fifty thousand dollars?
So, this would, so the Tahoe that's currently outside, it's a twenty-three model, PPV. They got all the special things in it to let it run longer engine hours. Its purchase price, if I can think off the top of my head, it was base, nothing on it, no stickers. And y'all saw it driving around a little bit before it got stickers, was thirty-four thousand dollars base through the state purchasing program. We're able to do that again, it's just, it will be limited to what goes in it. Everything that we have been purchasing can be passed down immediately without any more modifications done to it. A light bar is only designed on top of the car, only designed to, life expectancy is five to six years before it no longer works. So, at one point, the department was really good at taking off of cars, putting it on, but then you have a car with a bunch of light bars on it, none of the lights come on. And that just happened over time. So, my thing was, get a new vehicle, it gets passed down, and it's ready to go every single time. We are, and I'm able to make that modification where we can put, it will be limited things in it. It will not be fully patrol-ready, but when it comes time to be moved down, it can be modified with slight adjustments for that. It's just, it costs money.
So, you bought the vehicle at about thirty-four, and all the?
Everything.
Everything added on equaled fifty-seven?
Correct.
Okay.
And I know the insurance adjustment for it shows the price at fifty-seven. When we turned it in, we put, this is how much this entire vehicle costs.
So, a new vehicle will replace what vehicle?
A new vehicle would replace, we have a truck that is a twenty thirteen model. It has been worked on and worked on and worked on. There's light, there's wires hanging different locations, because it was part of that recycle program, where we take equipment, try to add it on and make it work. I would say either the truck or the twenty-four fourteen Dodge Charger. Currently behind the police department right now is a twenty fourteen Dodge Charger that we have been using as a skeleton bone to rip off parts and make, keep one unit running. When the transmission and engine went out, and that one twenty fourteen, we had purchased about six months apart initially in twenty fifteen. We're just trying to keep it alive. So, we didn't wreck a car, I want y'all to understand. If you drive and you look behind the police department, we're getting a car cover for it to be in compliance with city ordinance. But it does look like it was in a major car accident, but we have since removed bumpers. Everything we've taken off of it. The steering column is also gone, to keep one functioning twenty fourteen. So, I haven't, just want you to know, I have done my best to keep them running, to the point of, we're using one as a skeleton.
So, Bubba, you did a little research on the last vehicle we bought for Allen and his crew. How hard was it to find a vehicle for fifty thousand?
Well, at that point, it was, it was pretty tough, because there, there wasn't very many of them. And it was a deal where all I could do is go to the dealer, because, you know, they were renting, you know, Allen's vehicle was down, because he wrecked it, and it was costing about a thousand dollars a week just to rent a vehicle, so. It seemed like we bought that one for around forty-four or something at that time. And that was the cheapest, I had two other estimates, and one of the highest, fifty. They just weren't very many of them, I was wanting to look for a smaller truck than that one, and they just weren't out there at the time.
So, Tino, I just have a question for you. Do you think that you could find a, like, if it came to where we needed to purchase a vehicle? Because I would hate for y'all to go to try to get in it, and something is happening with somebody, and you have to almost Fred Flintstone your vehicle. So, at fifty thousand, do you think you can get what you need?
Yes.
For the department and be functioning?
Yes, I believe I can.
Okay, good.
Animal control will stay under the police department, correct?
I think it should personally, just because we can identify what it is.
I see where the proposed budget went up to a thousand dollars now instead of five hundred. I would like to see it, as with some other individuals here, I do believe, back up to the original. But, you know, I know you gave some there, thank you, Patricia.
That's all I have, I don't?
I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Would you like to look over the municipal court while we still have him up there?
Okay, yeah.
Let me throw something out here just a second before we move on. As far as the animal control, I see we've got it bumped up to a thousand. April was saying a while ago that, that she need, she feels like it needs to be back up to its original.
Sixteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
And someone made a comment a while ago that they felt like that my, my feelings were that, that we didn't need to do that. I never said that, I'm, I'm, I'm all for budget.
Yeah, I heard that comment. When, when you made out this budget and everything, are you, you helped make this budget out, right, Chief, for the police department?
Took it, and we actually did do some cutting and adjustments, yes.
So, at that time, you, you?
He sat down with, with Hollis and I, and we went over.
Okay, so the three of you, so the three of you, okay.
I didn't just do it by myself.
So, without changing the FOJA, we're, we're lower seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven from where we were yesterday. And then, increasing the FOJA back?
You'd have to add fifteen, three fifty-nine to that.
I went in today and made a lot of cuts, knowing that we were not meeting budget.
Yeah.
And that's why we're, where we were.
That's good.
On, under, in this, on the park improvements, I see? According to this, this year, it's still at the?
Yeah, I cut it down.
Did you cut that back down?
I thought I did. Let's see. I meant, I, I did some of this, and then Melissa had some of it, and then, I still wasn't, so I went back some more, but I thought I had cut it down.
Well, I was, I was just thinking that if we brought that park improvements back out, down to the forty that it was this year, then that would leave enough to take care of FOJA.
What line item is that?
That's under the?
Street department?
Park improvements.
Street department.
All right, the bottom?
Park improvements, about fourth from the bottom.
Park improvements, okay. Yeah, I mean, you could, you could drop that down, I mean, you could always, we can always amend the budget later, okay? We have before. Can we amend, we amend the budget later if we need to put more money in a particular line item?
Amend the budget to move from line item to line item, yes. But not from water to?
No, no, I know, not water, but I mean, on this here, you could theoretically cut that fifty-five down to forty again, and then if we needed more money, we could put some back in it. Right?
Yes, yes, sir, from another line item.
So, there is a possibility of finding that other fifteen thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I don't think Ms. Patricia have a problem finding it. I have a question, just because, for you, Ms. Patricia, as just far as the whole budget. I know that, I mean, just for me personally, I know it probably can't be easy trying to step into this role that you have stepped in. So, I would just like to see, like we kinda did today with Tino, if you have, can set aside some time to sit with Allen, you may already have, I don't know.
I asked him to come tonight, and he had other plans.
Well, I, I mean, I understand that he might, probably because he didn't think he had to be here.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm just saying that, that he knows, and?
So, if we can just work with him, and then possibly work with Melissa, just to kinda see, because we're not out there doing it every day, they know more of what they need versus, you know, what? what we know, but I just, I just want to, you know, see if we can just work with everybody.
And like I said last night, everything, he went over with us, each line by line.
Okay, see, we just haven't had time to see everything.
But, we needed him, and to probably talk to him, because he didn't, he, he said that I hadn't given him enough opportunity to look at the budget, so he probably needs to look over it some more, and then come in for us.
And then maybe he can come next weekend, present for us.
Yeah, exactly, I, I just want, just want you to think...
We have, we have a meeting next week, right? Tomorrow.
And then, I'm not sure if this is the ethical thing to do, or, and I want to make sure that we're being ethical. But, is there a way, and I know Rob came up last night, just because he kind of knows where there may be some stuff that, that we, I mean, I know he talks about it, but if you and him could kind of sit down and talk, so we can get the budget balanced, and then we can kind of move forward, because we don't want to run into where we're, we don't have enough time, and then we're making a rash decision. I would like to kind of see a balance of it, and then we go from, you know, from there. I, I do like this part of it, going to see where we can kind of move back and forth, but we have to kind of wrap this part of it up, I feel like, and then see the balance, and then go from there. So, just asking if there's no, no, there's never anything wrong with getting help, is what I'll say.
Well, maybe we should ask him to come, and he could go over it with us.
Okay.
And then you would know, too, what he had to say.
Okay.
Back to municipal court.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, but on the, the park improvements, were we cutting that?
Yes.
Okay. What was y'all cutting?
How much are we cutting?
Fifteen thousand out of that, back to the forty-seven.
You're, you're cutting the park improvements?
Yeah.
Yeah, line, well, line item...
Forty thousand.
Okay.
I'm actually going to wind up...
What, what were the improvements going to be?
Have you looked at it lately?
This, this year...
No, no, I haven't looked at it.
This, this year, what we've done so far, is we, we fixed that trail in the, on the boardwalk. It was ten thousand, eight hundred. We have a project out for bids now, to redo the, the areas around the playgrounds in Lyons Park, and the park on Haywood Street. Those bids, bid opening is, is next week, the twentieth, I think. And we'll, we'll have that to look at for the next...
Okay, but for right now, park improvement, that forty thousand will be...
Well, and then, it's like April said, there's a lot of trees that needed to be cut over there.
Right, trimming, and that pond, and all that.
Pond, and all of that, so, yeah, it's just...
Okay.
What's the...
And we're going to have to, you know, sooner or later, replace probably some, some, or get some more toys, or whatever you call them.
Equipment.
Sliding, equipment.
Equipment, yeah.
But, I mean, we can move a line item around, we need to do that later, whenever it comes up.
Yeah.
Back to municipal court.
Okay, I noticed that there's a drastic reduction on office supplies.
Correct.
What, what happened there? I mean, great, don't get me wrong.
Right.
I just, it's kind of...
It was a recoding on what is police department usage, separate from municipal court usage.
Ah, okay.
So, we started finalizing what needs to be sorted out. We're printing stuff for court, for citations, we need to move over and make sure we're printing it and coding it to the right, either.
Okay, all right, I just saw that, and I thought, wow, okay, cool. And, and I assume that's the same reasoning behind the reduction in the phone cost as well?
Correct, correct.
Excellent.
We might need to go up in office supplies, so you can write those tickets, Tino.
I know.
We need more paper.
Do you think you could, I know there are no quotas.
Right.
But, do you think you could maybe take advantage of some of the lawbreakers that, you know, speed down fifty-nine, and disregard our speeding signs a little more, and catch some of those people going through? You know, in, in my opinion, truckers, when they know there are police officers that, waiting on them, that, that, it kind of gives Jefferson a reputation, and they're gonna slow down, and maybe eventually save that terrible crash that's coming at that intersection.
They actually set up by the storage buildings, I, I see them all the time, I have to, don't give me a ticket, but I have to put my seatbelt on, you know, right there. So, they do actually set up there, you know, it, it's not a lot of, there's not a lot of safe places for them to be along fifty-nine, I mean, you know, but...
Yes, so, couple things. I don't, we're not going to, I'm not going to phrase it as take advantage of, but rather educate the public. Just tricky language I have to be aware of. Yes, traffic enforcement is very important, education is very important. We worked hard with Tech dot to get more material and education here. In a perfect society, there will be absolutely no citation revenue, because everyone would follow the law. More education does decrease it, individuals, more crashes that do happen, loved ones die, and unfortunately, they learn because of that. They learn to wear their seatbelt, they learn to not drive recklessly. That's the sad truth, though, through education. Yes, with, yes, there's opportunities to enforce traffic code on U.S. Highway fifty-nine.
I know, I live close by, and, you know, that jack braking, you know, I guess that's what they call it?
Yes, engine brake, violation of city ordinance, I'm aware of that one.
I hear it all the time.
Yes.
And, you know, not that you can be there to catch every one of them, but, you know, there's a lot, in my opinion, you know, we're missing a big opportunity, you know. You saw the thing where Linden, they have Highway fifty-nine, you know, running through their town, and they're bringing in three hundred, four thousand dollars in municipal fines. And, they can't be any busier than we are, you know. So, you know, I would like to see some of the lawless people pay for their lawlessness.
I agree.
And it could increase our coffers.
There are those that need to be, there needs to be punishment for their bad behavior. I don't ever encourage any officer, because of the laws put in transportation code, to write a ticket, I can't, or I will be jobless real fast, free up my, my future real quick. But, I do say, we do need to enforce traffic code. Go out there, whether you write a ticket or a warning, that is your prerogative, I can't decide for you. And if you make a good citation, and you choose to go with it, I'll stand behind you a hundred percent. There, we do have, you know, our officers who are working twenty-four seven. When they get to a line, I tell them, especially when they're working six, seven twelves in a row, there's officer safety that needs to be concerned with, do you want to go out there on Highway fifty-nine when there's one deputy working? Do you want to start stopping traffic when your next backup, if something was to happen, is twenty minutes away? Take that in line with what you do. If they are coming to town, you know, it's a better chance to get on the highway. So, that is in consideration, we do have those talks. Officer safety is very important, with the state of our nation, the state of our country, the state of our state, is very important. We do have officers who could get hit by DWI's, I think one recently died from the Metroplex because of that. And, balance the two, if you're over exhausted, you know, tell us, I always stress to them, tell me if you're getting pushed to the limit, we can get someone else on rotation while you take some time off, so they know that they can come to me for those reasons. We are moving in a direction of, of course, traffic enforcement, I do want to stress that. Of course, it's PSA, school starts tomorrow, and we will be out there.
I know, I have to drive through it just about every morning. I don't see any thing on the municipal court.
And, I believe, just to update, I reviewed Linden's budget, because it gets brought up. I just want to say this. The what's posted online shows their revenue at a hundred and sixty thousand for last year. And currently, to date, we're at around seventy thousand in citation revenue.
Now, who was it, one sixty?
Linden.
I saw year-to-date, three oh four.
Three oh four. It was, what's online is what I saw. I reviewed it, just because I know it was a topic, I wanted to verify what was going on. They have had a past police chief who no longer has a peace officer license because of what was generated, and what was done. So, there is a line that I have to be careful with.
I'll say it again, for the hundredth time. I want to thank you guys for being who you are. I've been here for almost twenty years now, and you guys are some of the best. The kids know y'all, they're not afraid of y'all, they come up to y'all, y'all interact with the public. So, I just want to say thank you for that. And I want to say, stay safe, keep doing what y'all are doing, it's not easy. Linden is very small, so people are just driving through, so they probably can do more tickets there in Linden. People, y'all are interacting with so many people inside of the city, and all of that, so, ju- just stay safe and keep doing what y'all are doing.
I appreciate that.
I have one thing to say about the municipal court budget, I cut my husband's salary in half. And I would appreciate it if y'all would bump it back up to six thousand dollars instead of three.
What's that under?
That's under legal and accounting.
Poor Jim.
I know.
He's not going to be able to go to McDonald's.
Here's the deal, I told him the other day that he was going to have to start carpooling with you riding around town.
Yeah. Well, I got to get with Pam McCaslin, little George, little George Watley, and then we can save a lot of gas.
Oh, gosh.
You know, we've talked about that, actually.
Y'all can get a bus. Okay.
All right, move it back up.
I don't, I think when we were discussing it, that wasn't, that's not something we first discussed, right? When we were making adjustments?
No, we didn't, yeah.
That's not...
No, I did, I just wasn't thinking.
Any other questions? Ride-alongs, please, come join us, I have a waiver for you in case you die, not to save the city.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
My wife's, my life insurance policy paid up, maybe she wants to be for sure, I mean. Now, on, now, Mayor, you know, you mentioned the other day that you made a trip. You need to turn your, your expenses in. I mean, there's no reason in the world you ought to fade that yourself.
No, I'm going to, yeah. I, I've turned in the part of it to Melissa, I got to find the other part. Where would you like to go next?
Well, there's one more thing that kind of bugs me, and that is the, the Harrison Salutes America.
Put it back.
Where is that?
I don't have a problem with it.
It's sixty, forty on the front page of Administration.
Admin. Admin.
Now, I, I mentioned that as a joke, about, you know, the Jedco picking it up, but I wasn't in favor of not doing it here, and then hopefully Ted...
I was looking for ways to balance the budget.
Okay, but I didn't know whether I was misunderstanding.
No.
Okay, all right.
So, we're going to move it back, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I was hoping they'd take that off our hands. They got plenty of money over there.
You talking about economic development?
No.
No, down at the six...
Six zero, four zero.
I want to color on yours still.
Okay.
Sixth one from the bottom on the administration page, general.
And I actually heard this year that there were so many people here, that was the most people they have saw in a long time, so, I'm happy that we're keeping that where it is.
Put that back in, okay.
Do you want to start going over the, one at a time, one sheet at a time? One department at a time, or, start with Administration?
Yes. One of the things that we're going to need to increase is the public restroom maintenance.
Okay. How much would you like there? Just passing out money like that.
I know we're adding it, but we need them cleaned, and if we cut it, they won't get cleaned.
Hey, just, just tell me a number.
Maybe twelve thousand. And that's also going to include painting, I mean, if you want them painted. If not, if you just want them cleaned for the year, and, you know, minor maintenance and all of that, I would say maybe twelve thousand. If you're wanting actual, you know, the painting done, and the tile replaced.
Y'all are wanting, not you.
Well...
Where is, is that actual on that first line payroll, is, is, is that eighty-nine, nine, sixty-nine? Is that, is that actual, or is that a misprint?
No, that's actual, year-to-date.
Now, where is Cami's? What line item was her...
Right now, hers is a salary adjustment placeholder.
Okay.
But, we didn't budget anything there, did we?
No, no, ma'am. That's, we ended up moving her up to the payroll account. And that's if y'all decide to hire her.
Okay, this, this, that was going to be my question. Were we going to consider to hire her, to hire her?
When do you, we need to get that on the agenda then, if we want to.
She has to work a minimum of, I believe, four hundred hours before we can consider that.
Okay, all right.
And she is right at that threshold, and she is asked to be placed on this next agenda. Surprisingly, she has asked to be placed on this agenda. And I commend her for it, because she's doing a great job.
I, I like her, she seems very good.
I do, too, I think she's a great addition.
Were you holding a gun on her?
No.
She actually said hello to me when I came in.
All right, so she's already up into the budget on the, on the payroll now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
Now, when you look at this, it shows you who else there.
And we can cut back on hospitalization for her, because she's, if we were to hire her, she's not going to accept the city's insurance. So, we'll be able to cut that out of our budget for her.
Is she on her husband's?
She's on what?
She has other insurance.
Down here at miscellaneous expense, fifty-nine, ninety, current year is about twelve hundred and sixty bucks. Projecting it twelve thousand, are we going to need twelve thousand? I don't know what all, because you've got...
I don't know what all, because you've got miscellaneous and we got contingent. Had to be somewhere yet.
Yes. All right, so on the miscellaneous expense last year, that included, uh, one thousand for hospitality, one thousand Gimplicue, two thousand miscellaneous, sixteen thousand tables, chairs, trash cans, et cetera.
Under miscellaneous expense?
Yes, that's how it was budgeted last year. These are things, now, the miscellaneous expense and contingency includes this building and, and tourism items that are not, that, I'm not saying this is what I've done. I'm saying this is how it is. So those things that the, the tourism department needed for this building went under miscellaneous and contingent. Now, it hasn't been spent, but they have scheduled for the chairs to be cleaned, which is what's part of this year's budget. They've also scheduled for those floors in, out there to be cleaned, um, the grout and everything. So that's part of this year's budget. These items over here that are included in that miscellaneous is for additional improvements to this building.
I think somehow we need to pull out the expenses for this building. You know, I've talked about this. So that we can see what th- this building's actually costing us.
Okay. And when y'all let me know if you want me to create a new fund or a new department for that, and I can do it. But I, I can't just, you know, go ahead and do it. I, I need instruction on how y'all want it. Because I, this appears that y'all have been doing this for quite a while. You've had the tour, well, originally it was in the hot tax. Colleen's explained that at city council meetings, how expenses were being paid out of the hot tax when they shouldn't have been. So the city council, this was all before my time, had moved that from the hot tax and put it into the administration fund. They didn't create a new fund for it. They just put it in administration. So you'll see that there are two line items for, um, building expenses or building maintenance. One is gonna be for the old city hall, and one is gonna be for this building here. You're gonna see that there's two for utilities. One is for the old city hall, and one is for here. And the utilities at old city hall are still being used because we do need to have climate control to protect those records. And so the air conditioner's back on, and the heater's on in the wintertime.
Which line item corresponds to which?
The ones up above correspond with the city hall.
Are you talking about five-three-hundred?
Fifty-two fifty.
So the fifty-two fifty building maintenance is old city hall, and the fifty-two fifty-five building supplies is for city hall.
The old city, the old city hall?
Uh, yes. And the utilities is for old city hall.
The fifty-three hundred utilities?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
No. Oh, yeah. I thought you were talking line, you're talking, no.
Oh, I was talking line item number, yeah.
Yeah.
So then the, the sixty-ninety and the miscellaneous?
Uh, yes, so the sixty-sixty, the sixty-seventy, and the sixty-ninety all correspond with this building.
Okay. All right, can we drop the sixty-ten contingent fund? Can we drop that down to five thousand?
So let's see.
There's nothing currently on current year four.
Right. There's not, but let, hang on a second. Because last year's contingent was, that was potential city hall move, other contingencies, two thousand twenty-eight dollar transportation center camera fee, and it says four thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars for the chamber. But that had its own line item. So, yeah, that could probably be cut back.
Okay.
That's good.
What, what do y'all want it at?
Five thousand. You know, it was more or less a, a wash on the, you know, because we put the ten back in for Jefferson Salutes America. We've got, uh, uh, and then bumped, uh, public restroom maintenance up to twelve. So we added two there, so we still have some left over. If we drop that down to five, so that would be, what, there's eighteen thousand total. Yeah. So that could make up for Mr. Finstrom's raise.
All right.
Want it? Now, you're an Aggie, you're an Aggie finance guy, so you need to, I don't have a calculator.
You don't have a calculator?
On this legal and accounting fee on Administration, it went from four hundred and seventy-seven thousand down to twenty-five thousand in the proposed budget.
It's because everybody's gonna start acting nicer.
That was, uh, in case we had to pay off on the lawsuit.
Oh, okay. Because there was a couple lawsuits going on.
Yeah, we were, we had some.
I have a question.
Thank you.
On the, just looking back at the twenty-twenty-three budget, where the community center was getting eighteen, is there any way for us to get them to fifteen? Just because I know that they need lots and lots and lots of repairs.
So the, the community center, when it was the eighteen thousand, it dropped to the twelve, twelve thousand? You'd have to ask Mayor Baker. But I believe the reason for that was because of the anticipated move to the primary school. Something to do with that. Um, that's, that's why he ended up dropping it, but that-
Yeah, and I'm fine with that. I just want to-
April, I think we should move it back up to the eighteen. I mean, you're right, there's lots that needs to be done.
There's lots and lots and lots. And I'm fine with move, I just wanted to, I didn't want anybody to jump over at me. I just were trying to, but I, I do agree with the eighteen, if we can find it. I would like to see them back up there because they are having lots and lots and lots more events for kids and, you know, doing different stuff like that, so. And they are coming forth, they're telling us what they're doing with their money, so we can see a clear picture of what they're doing. So I would like to see the community center move back to eighteen, if we could do eighteen. I think we can find it.
Well, we just had to cut Jim again.
Yep.
Oh, well, he's gonna be riding with you, so it don't matter.
We added ten. We, we had some, and then we added ten on the Jefferson Salutes.
Yeah.
But we also picked up eighteen-six. So that leaves, that would be enough, the six thousand, to bump that up to the eighteen. And that would leave two thousand six eighty-seven. Does that sound right? If we did that?
Sounds great to me, Ray.
What?
It sounds great. Good job.
I, I'm, I'm checking my numbers, but, you know. I think I'm adding it right. Okay, so. All right, and then really, the one we, we got left now is, uh, you know, trying to talk to Alan. What, we try to get him next week or something and go over his?
Yeah, he said that, yeah, yeah, he'd let, we'd let him know what, when it is, that he would be happy to come.
Are we moving next Monday, is that right?
Yes. Next Monday budget, next Tuesday, regular city council meeting.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I do need to bring up the accounting fees.
On where?
Uh, on the administrative budget. We had, we had cut that last year in the accounting fees. It was figured in for the new accounting software and codification for eighty thousand dollars to cover those two. We haven't paid out the codification, and we haven't paid out the new accounting software. Those bid proposals are due into us this Friday, for us to open and get it on the agenda for the council next week. And I'm hoping that if we find one that will work for this city, and city council proves it, that we can start paying on that and maybe not have so much in the budget next year. But if we can't start paying on it this year, then we're gonna have to make sure that we have funds to pay for it for next year.
So are you saying it needs to go back up to eighty?
Well, and it also included our audit fees. So the accounting included audit fees, the new accounting software, and the codification that totaled that one hundred and six thousand and seven hundred and fifty dollars. I believe our audit this year's, uh, thirty-five thousand instead of the twenty-six when this budget was done. So.
You, so you don't know whether we're gonna be able to pay for that out of this year's budget? Is that what you're saying? It's gonna run over to next year?
Yes, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head. We, um, without talking to them, without them coming in, I'm hoping that we can work something out where we can, you know, pay a certain amount upfront to get started, and a certain amount halfway through, and then a certain amount at the end. But, um, we're looking at anywhere from six months to nine months to go active with whatever we choose, if we choose something. So it will be in next year's, in the twenty-twenty-five budget.
But some of it we can get in on this budget.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping.
Okay.
Okay, good.
I'm hoping to get at least a chunk of that. So whoever we choose, I'm gonna at least present that to them.
So how much would you like there?
Well, we know we need thirty-five thousand for our auditors. Kind of hear it.
He, he's adding it.
Oh, good. Thank you, thank you. Thirty-five for the auditor. And we might get that paid out of this year's budget too. He wants to come and present to council next week. So if, if we can get it to council, we can get an invoice, we'll get at least this year's out and hopefully get them on the roll for next year too. And hopefully at the same price. But thirty-five for the auditor. I'm hoping that maybe we can at least pay half of the software upfront, if you're all comfortable with that, if that's something I can try and work with them on. So if-
What's half gonna be?
Well, we don't know, because the bids aren't in, but it's gonna be at least fifty thousand.
At least?
Yeah. I would say fifty to sixty-five thousand is what I'm hoping the bids will come in.
What about, uh, you're gonna have to keep, we're gonna have to keep paying the people y'all are using now while you get things?
Yeah, and that's about eighteen thousand.
Okay. So.
So we'll need about eighteen thousand for the current software. Maybe-
That's, you are, we're looking right now, and if the bid's coming around sixty-five, so that's a hundred and eighteen thousand. Okay, we, we should know more next week, though, really, should we?
Yeah.
Yes. Well, we should, we should know more by this Friday, and maybe we can plan on something on Monday.
Well, it's the, uh, uh, next Tuesday, we'll also have a completed, uh, year-to-date on, uh, through July. What, we own our expenses and revenue?
We should. I just got the bank statement, so if, if I can get some peace and quiet, I can get some reconciliation done. We'll see how that goes.
Hang the shed out, babe.
You can only have one, you can only have one or the other. Peace or quiet. Which one do you want?
You know, some of this budget, you know, you're, you're having to guess, because we're do, we're doing it basically with two months left in the year.
Yeah.
And so, you know, we're having to guess a little bit on what the, you know, the revenue coming in is. And what, uh, whenever we get through there, I was gonna suggest a few things on revenue, so when we get through with this stuff.
Now, inspection fees? We talked about that last night, and it's gonna be a wash. Uh, we're gonna put that in, whatever to, we'll make that off of, um, selling building permits. And then if we can find somebody that'll just take, you know, take the money and, and do it with somebody that knows-
On a contract kind of basis?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, the building maintenance for this building, it dropped to two thousand from the budgeted twenty-three. That building maintenance includes cleaning the restrooms here. It includes sanitizing and sterilizing these floors. It includes repairs and maintenance to the generator, the ice machine, the, um, fire extinguishers. I don't believe that if we want to continue having those things tended to, that two thousand will work.
Question. Could we not use the same person that, or maybe we do, I don't know, use the same person that does the public and then these restrooms?
Uh, the same person that does the public restrooms is doing the restrooms here and the city hall, and she gets twenty-two dollars per restroom, per cleaning.
Oh, wow.
And that's what we're paying her to clean the public restrooms and to clean these restrooms.
Oh, yeah, no.
And during events, when she comes multiple times a day during this event.
Twenty-two dollars per restroom?
Twenty-two dollars.
Per hour?
Per restroom.
So like, is this one restroom, or does she count each stall?
Men's restroom, women's restroom. She charges extra to clean the showers, because it's a different type of sanitizing, but she doesn't do that unless we open those up to the public, so. But her fees are included in these public restrooms, and then also in the, uh, building maintenance for here.
So what does that need to be?
The other, well, it needs to be either the twenty-three thousand, but if we're gonna cut it, maybe twenty thousand?
You just need one more set, right?
It's not, it's not gonna be painting the walls. I know there's a wish list to have the walls painted, and the doors outside painted, and the sign out there for the bridge.
We can go without some paint, and I, I mean, twenty-two dollars to clean restrooms?
You can't believe how bad those are. I've had toilet paper down there before.
I was just gonna say, my four-year-old doesn't aim at all, so I can just imagine. And, no, we need to maybe not paint and increase that for her.
So you're saying building, on that building maintenance, instead of two, it needs to be twenty? Is that what you're saying?
At least twenty thousand.
So far, we have increased the proposed budget on admin by sixty-one thousand dollars.
Building supplies, do we need to add more to that?
I don't think we do. We're at nineteen seventy-six. We budgeted twenty-nine seventy-five. I haven't-
No, we budgeted.
Last year, last year, I'm sorry. Last year was, or for this current year, was twenty-nine seventy-five. This year, for twenty-five, uh, looks like it was entered in as twenty-five hundred.
We maybe can take a little bit out of that.
This is, um, we might be able to.
Is that the toilet tissue?
Uh, this, yes, that's the toilet paper, the paper towels, the cleaning supplies, uh, for the restrooms.
I think we maybe could get away with it being maybe twenty-two or twenty-three. I mean, twenty-two, we're probably cutting it close, but probably twenty-three, I think we could.
This is the third one.
Third one, on building supplies.
Okay, so instead of-
Twenty-three, is that what you said?
Yeah, I thi, I think we could get away with it being twenty-three.
Instead of twenty-five?
Instead of twenty-five. It'll save us a little bit.
Engineering services are that- Engineering services are that, is that going to be? We only have four thousand dollars there, is that enough?
Uh, that, it depends on what council decides they wanna do.
I talked to the, um, people about, that was gonna do city hall, and as I was telling y'all last night. And so the next step for them to draw up the plans and things is a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars.
Yikes.
No.
Well, as, as things stand, I, I just don't see. You know, it just, it's not gonna happen. It's, it's just not gonna happen.
Not with them.
I can draw.
And, well, I don't think.
I can.
It's gonna, it'd have to be, either we find a, a place to move to.
Right.
Or we're gonna have to float bond, and we've already. We just go.
Well, you just come on down here in the morning, and you tell those girls they just.
I, I wish, I wish to hell we didn't have to.
Just get happy, they're gonna have to stay here.
But, I mean, don't worry, be happy. Every, I mean, you know, we sat over there in the old building and watched it crumble around our ears.
I mean, I think we can.
The chickens are coming home to roost.
As Ray would say, nobody wants to hear it. And, I mean, I, I support them wholeheartedly, but we, we need to, as far as that, along with everything else, we got a lot of wish lists and all that. We need to, and I don't wanna talk about it forever either. We need to come up with a solid plan, we need to come up with something. Of course, we've heard them, um, and what they think. If they're going to stay in this building, we have to make, just for a little bit longer, we need to talk about their safety, we need to talk about what we can do, you know, to keep them safe. And we don't need to talk about it long, we need to make it happen, is what we need to do. So, that's, that's all I'm saying.
Next. Well, what else is there? We've got, uh, planning and zoning, and they, their budget's five thousand, y'all think that's what it should be?
I'm okay with the way it is. Anybody else?
Did they say what expenses they want?
Uh, office supplies, postage, advertising, and miscellaneous.
They talked to us about it, um, several council meetings ago.
In the last council meeting, they presented to the city council their budget, and they also presented to the city council, uh, their articles that they have gone through and asked y'all to go through, review it, and approve it. So you have those from the packet from the last month in, in your council packets for that regular meeting. But they, they did say that the office supplies is to help with their file, they, they had a donated filing cabinet, which was nice, we didn't have to pay two hundred and fifty dollars for one. We just had a whole bunch of, um, file folders that were donated to us.
And he is here too.
They can utilize the help with that.
Yeah, he is. Robin has some questions for you.
I think it's all here, yeah.
And I remember them coming.
No questions, we'll march forward.
Thank you, thank you.
We did municipal court, fire department.
Well, you never know on them, I mean, you know, depending on, you'd have to talk to Rod or Victor, I guess, see if they've got any intended purchases, um, coming up that they're aware of.
Yeah, I would like to talk with them, you know, if they have anything as well.
See, just like, you know, they, at times, they, they seem like their budget has always been somewhere around, the adopted one's somewhere around thirty-seven, thirty-eight. Usually they never even get close to it, you know, but sometimes they do, so. I don't know if they have something planned to buy, so I have no idea.
Well, Victor is going to be here at the next council meeting?
Um, I can confirm with him.
And maybe we could just ask him about it then.
When the budget went out, this last one that was posted, he did review that. I let him know that the insurance increased. Um, I asked him if there was any changes that he would like on that, because I knew he hadn't met with you, and he just so happened to stop by, so I hope I didn't overstep. But, um, he said everything looked good on that budget. This one is cut back a little bit, the one that's being presented today. So if you would like, I can forward that to him.
Or we can just put it back, since he okayed it before.
It's whatever you would like to do.
How much did we take off?
I don't have the budget from last week.
I have it right here, okay.
The fire department. Uh, what the proposed twenty twenty-five budget was for the fire department.
It's about two thousand.
About three thousand dollars.
About one hundred something bucks, because we had it originally at, at forty-two, eight ninety-five.
Yeah.
And it's forty-seven, seven-five, but, you know, unless they're planning on buying something, and, you know, you can rock it down just.
I would like for you to send it to them to see if they're okay with the forty-seven, I mean, with the forty. I would just, because if we can save some, we can save some.
Okay. Police department, we're done. Streets, we're gonna wait on Allen. Visitor promotion, it's a wash. We haven't heard Colleen, from Colleen yet.
She did just let me know that they, she just texted me while we were meeting, and let me know that, um, they have gone over their budget, they're ready for me to enter in the numbers. Oh, and I just got another text that says, "I charge no office supplies and use my own paper and printer for tourism." So, I think she might have wanted y'all to know that.
Oh, we, and we've got that on there, the two hundred dollars, is that the deal?
Which one are you on?
Uh, visitor promotion.
Oh, this is not their budget. Do we wanna?
No, no, we wanna do whatever they want to, I mean, I don't care when we're there, I just thought maybe you were taking the two hundred dollars off, since she said. But you just, I would think you just.
No, that, that two hundred dollars is for Danielle.
Oh, okay.
And, and her there in the office, that's what she uses for her office supplies.
And water and sewer, we'll get with Allen.
On Allen's, I know he hasn't looked at this since the changes were made from yesterday to today. And in keying in the numbers, um, that I received today, I noticed that the postage had gone down for the water.
Is that, is that what I just did it when I?
When you were cutting.
To, to balance this budget, and I spent all day doing it so that we can sit here and discuss it. Why didn't we do this last night? Just asking.
Well, we need to increase the postage. Um, postage is going up, it's gone up, I think, two times so far this year. And we have, this month, we're getting ready to, if she didn't do it today, she's getting ready to send, uh, late notices. And then, um, next month, we will have.
That goes through.
Bills and late notices. That all goes through them, and it looks like they're going to exceed their budget this year on postage. And postage will probably go up one or two more times.
Yep.
Next year at least. Also, our permit fee went up forty dollars. It's gonna go up forty dollars next year for our permit fee to be able to mail the utility bills.
Is it, is it a law that we have to mail utility bills? Could we offer an incentive if somebody goes paperless and receives their bill by email?
We can't require them to. If that's something that y'all decided you wanted to do, I believe it might have to be set by ordinance.
But maybe an incentive to go paperless?
Any type of fee that we impose is supposed to be set by ordinance. So, we need to check with our attorney if we're going to make any changes like that, and find out if it's something we can do and we won't be in any violations. It sounds like a good, you know, gesture to do, but I don't want to answer a question and be incorrect on it.
Where was this, where's the postage, is that a?
It's, uh.
Office and?
The office supplies and printing.
Fifty-ten? So you, we already know that's not a good number.
Yeah.
So, what do you think?
Well, we're probably gonna be at eight thousand, at least this year. I mean, I, I don't, I don't normally see all of this, I don't see what goes through on the water and sewer. I just, when keying this in, on my system, it says office supplies, printing, and postage. So, that's when I noticed it. Maybe eighty-five hundred. I'm just throwing a number out there.
Because we're already at seventy-four, sixty-seven.
Yeah.
Right.
And we have three more mailings, uh, one large mailing and two smallers.
And I know we've probably talked about this several times, I've slipped since then. But when we get the new software and all of that, is it the option for people to pay their bills online?
So, that's what's great about this ERP program, or these ones that I've set in. We've had some ones that are not gonna be good for the city, they're good for other cities, but not for ours. But the ones, the demos that I've done the past two years have consisted of leaning towards the ones that won, yes, accept credit card payments. Yes, you can pay online. Yes, you can do service tickets that way. And you can also, a lot of them are going to where they mail the bills. They're not in a card form, they're in an envelope. A lot of them are doing away with the cards, the car, cards are getting lost in the mail. It's fifty-six cents now to post, to, to send a postcard for our late notices. Fifty-six cents a piece.
And they don't even get there most of the time then.
And a lot of them get returned to us, and, you know, that's with our permit, we're not getting discounts for it. We are doing, uh, the mailings the best way we can by sorting them. But our, our post office does not do what the post office does in, uh, Upsher County. Upsher County, if you separate them and do Long Views, or Upsher, um, what?
Gilmer.
Gilmer, thank you, all the Gilmers together and everybody else in a box, you get a discount for doing that. And everything in Gilmer stays in Gilmer, everything else that goes to Longview goes to Shreveport and back. Our post office doesn't do that. If they do, then we need to talk to them again and have them tell us, yes, that they do it. And that our system will let us do that. If our system doesn't let us separate it like that, then it would be really great to do that.
Okay, uh, moving along to.
I've got a question.
Okay.
On this water, water and sewer fund, there's an expense for loan repayment. How big is this loan?
So we have, the loan repayment consists of our twenty sixteen bonds, A, B, and C. And we are required to take money out of our water fund and move it into an interest and sinking fund. I can get you those balances. I sent, I gave them to council prior to you coming on, so I'll give you each one of those balances. We also have the two bonds, the region bank ones down below. Those ones are the twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen bonds. And then we also have the USDA, and that's included up here in the, uh, I believe it's the wastewater treatment.
So we're still paying on bonds from twenty fourteen, sixteen, all that?
In two thousand five, yes.
They're like forty a year.
We have two thousand five, two thousand, or twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, and three of them for twenty sixteen.
You said.
And they're all in our water.
Forty, the others are twenty, I think.
Yeah.
And we're paying about three hundred thousand a year on that, just wow.
And you're helping.
Huh?
And you're contributing in your water bill.
My water bill is fifty-eight dollars, my meter's not working.
You got a twenty-five dollar charge.
He ran himself out, he told me it wasn't working. And I told him I wasn't gonna say nothing, but he ran it himself out.
Uh-huh, now we do.
We'll have you new meter out there tomorrow.
Well, I'll correct that, I'm helping pay for it.
You helping pay for it.
You're not.
Thank you very much.
You're paying for it.
We get the meters fixed.
Then my bill will go up.
That's right.
Okay. American Rescue Plan, what are we rescuing?
That, that's COVID.
That's our Polk Street, Nolan Street project.
That's our what?
Polk Street, Nolan Street project, the American Rescue Plan.
And do you think these figures are okay?
I think, um, for the Beth Mead, and we should, if we're gonna expend out of an account, we need to make sure we put a budget line item in it. So, in the past, we haven't done that. I think it would be a good idea to put one thousand eighty dollars in the Beth Mead Trust expense line item for the proposed budget, so that at least it's considered budgeted, and we can expend it. So the Beth Mead one is, um, quite a few pages in, let's see what it's, it's, we've got the water fund. And then after the water fund, it says the water tank fund.
You're getting close.
And then we're getting to the Beth Mead.
Then you got the.
We have the Beth.
Interest income, and then the actual.
The only income coming in on that is our interest. But we talked about it a little bit yesterday, we do, um, pay to have that little park maintained, and it looks like it's one thousand eighty dollars, I think we ought to budget that in just so that it's there, and if we're gonna spend it, we budget it. It's its own bank account, so it's not coming out of the general fund or the water fund.
I haven't found it yet. I found it. Okay, so you said put what in the budget?
That ten eighty, that one thousand.
Yeah, that's, okay, budget that for the, that much, okay.
Rest is all interest to revenue.
I think so. I, but I wanted to talk about revenue.
The what, what?
Did you wanna talk about revenue, did you say?
Uh, yeah, just briefly. Ready to go to. Uh, one of the things I was wanting to find out is, you know, would we have to redo a, a building firm? Uh, one of the things I was wanting to find out is, you know, would we have to redo a, a building permit, you know, on the, the dumpsters, um, that Republic Waste is not getting from, you know, you'll see different building contractors and stuff and there'll be some other dumpster there besides Republic Waste. And we have a contract with them, so we could get, you know, whenever they get paid, we get a little of that too. I don't know that it would mount to a whole lot, but I see several yellow dumpsters and things like that where they, you know, where they put building materials and stuff in them whenever they tear something down.
The city council had touched on the contract with Republic for a little bit. I think Eric might've been here at the time and left.
It was, um, who was before Eric? Uh, Huck, Huckabee's the one that started that, that got that going.
But, uh, the council touched again on it, I believe while Eric was here. And the, it did get brought up that there were other trash services going through the city and they were trying to do something with that. I don't know if that stopped when Eric left. I can't recall dates right now. It's worth revisiting. It is worth revisiting and finding out on that. I mean, we do get a franchise from them, from Republic, but I don't know that we do from any of the others.
All the independents, I don't think, you know, that does residential trash and stuff, I'm not sure of any of that.
And so we've got cable, our lines and the right-of-ways installed in our right-of-ways here and there around town, and we should be collecting on that.
We are getting franchise fees.
Okay, okay.
New texts.
Okay.
Um, actually, uh, our, it's nice working with these auditors, I do have to say, because, you know, we're pulling, instead of them coming in and going through our files and them pulling it, this is how I can find records that I didn't know where they were. And, um, that three days with them was needed, much needed, especially for the city. But Amy has a file at her desk where she keeps all the income that comes in, um, the receipts that come in on our franchise. And I pulled all of those for, you know, our auditors and they went through them to, to do this audit. So they'll probably touch base on that, but if you're ever curious on what we're getting, you would ask before. I know where those are at now.
Okay.
And you can take a look at them.
Well, I did one time when I looked at that file, you know, used to, there was, you know, 'cause that top item that says, uh, I believe it was the intercable franchise, we used to get about thirty thousand bucks on that. And, uh, you know, there was some law changing down, down in Austin and all that, and then all of a sudden that started drying up. And then also, you know, whenever, everybody remembers when there was a, you had a separate long-distance carrier from,
Right.
from the regular AT&T or Southwestern Bell, we got money for that for a long time. And it's just trying to maximize what our income is and try to look at some of it and see what we can, we can get.
And one thing I think we need to talk about too, or think about, is these trash trucks that's picking up at these houses are huge. And, and they're ruining our roads. I mean, I don't think our roads are made for that kind of weight, but I, I don't know. I just.
Yeah, I've got a crater in my parking lot.
Well, yes, you do. But, I mean, so, I don't know. I don't know how we figure out the weight limit on the streets, but that might be something we wanna think about. Since we're having to repair them. Okay, anything else? If not, you know what? Motion, uh, Hollis to adjourn.
Second.
The second by somebody, April.
May.
April.
At nine twenty-four, all in favor.